Pledge of Allegiance and a prayer, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that Counselor Giles lead us in the world of preference.
Most high and gracious God, we ask that you watch over our council and be with each and every one of the citizens of Lawrence. I want to make special prayer for our public safety officers, keep them protected. Lord, we ask that you give us the wisdom and the guidance to do the best that we can, each and every one of us, each and every day, for our city of Lawrence. We ask all these things of your most precious mercy.
Amen. Next on the agenda is the termination of quorum. Note that there are two counselors that are absent today, Counselor Chavis and Counselor Jones. They are absent, but we do have enough for a quorum, so. Next on the list, we have comments of the council members and special recognitions and resolutions.
Mr. President.
Counselor Freeman.
Okay, I would like the mayor to address the reduced flasher signs for the city of Lawrence. I want to know if we're going to be getting any.
The, what was that again?
The school zones flasher signs.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if you would, sir, during the mayoral comments or administration comments, you have the liberty to address that question then, sir. Yes, sir. Are there any more comments of the council?
Mr. President.
Counselor Wells?
I would like to thank the street department. Saturday, when the winds were so high, I just happened to be driving down Forty-seventh Street in west of Franklin Road. There was a huge wind that was blocking most of Forty-seventh Street. I called the dispatch for the police department and very quickly, the street department got on it and got it cleaned up and hauled all the way to, just wanted to come in and think for it. And one other thing, if I may, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask you if it was possible that we could meet on this animal thing Thursday. Is that doable? I've contacted the other members of the committee that, and told them of the new situation with the possibility of a new building on the TDC building, and they would all like to discuss it further with you if possible.
Can we, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt.
The Board of Works is the fourteenth.
Okay, the Board of Works, I've just been advised to have a meeting on the fourteenth as well, so.
No, not the seventh.
Say it again.
Not this Thursday, the seventh, the fourteenth.
The fourteenth, okay. So, can this be addressed?
Sure. I just wanted to basically make it public so everybody knew that wants to be involved in it, that they knew that we would try to meet Thursday after Board of Public Works meeting.
Okay.
Mr. President.
What day was that?
The fourteenth.
It should be this Thursday.
This Thursday is not a meeting in public works.
Oh, okay.
Counsel Freeman.
Mr. President, I would like to thank the Department of Public Works, David Lott's for giving me, I know I asked for a lot, the stop sign at Welker and Welborn and Kenniston Farms. Thank you.
Well, that's ahead of schedule, isn't it? Are there any other comments? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes of a regular meeting for March 7, 2016, and March 16, 2016. Is there a motion on the floor for approval of the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Wheeler?
Second.
Second by Counselor Freeman. Are there any discussion? Any more, any questions? If not, by show of hands, all in favor? unanimous? All right. Next on the agenda, we have the signing of the vouchers, approval claims, and authorization of payment. I have a motion.
A motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Freeman?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Wheeler. Are there any discussion? Any questions? All right, we'll go to vote. All in favor of signing out of vouchers, approval of claims? All opposed? Unanimous? Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda, we have reported committees. We have finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met last week to discuss a couple upcoming proposals related to amending the 2016 budget. We were controller, Mr. Senator Kane, and answered the questions of the members of the Finance Committee, and we had an unanimous vote to recommend approval of the proposals to the council.
Okay.
Mr. President and Mr. Chair, if I could speak into the Finance Committee meeting, not the last one, but the previous one, there was discussions with respect to legal bills from Boz McKinney, and then in particular was work done on behalf of the refunding of the water utility bonds.
Mm-hmm.
And I think there was some question about whether or not those bonds were done on a contingency basis, and in fact, they were. The Finance Committee met on October 14, 2015, and the question was asked of Lead Counsel Dennis Otten with respect to will there be any cost of issuance of these bonds, meaning will there be any attorney fees if they are not marketable, and the question, and the answer was no. So, I noticed those are not on the vouchers, but I know that that was still of a question of a Finance Committee meeting a couple months ago. So, I verify that in fact that there should not be any cost to the city of Lawrence on those utility bonds that did not get placed.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Okay. Thank you for the report. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. Polls number two, 2016, clerk, Ms. Wells.
Proposal number two, 2016, introduced by Counselors Chevlot and Giles, a proposal for an ordinance amending the 2016 budget as approved by the common council with respect to the general fund, public safety tax fund, bond number two fund, motor vehicle highway fund, EMS fund, and fire debt fund.
All right, the public hearing is now open, and if anyone has any comments, you can do so at this time.
Yeah. Note for the record that Mr. Freyman, in his office, saw that notice was properly published this public hearing, and have confirmed to me that notice was placed in the announcement of the ten days before this hearing.
Okay, so there was a public notice for the public hearing for today in a proper time. All right. Are there any more questions or any comments on this matter at this time?
Mr. President.
Counselor Wells?
Yes, in regard to the $15,000 request from...
Point of order, Mr. Wells. You can make your comments once we move into the motion on ordinance. We'll let the public see if there are any further comments. We'll close the public hearing and then open up the regular meeting after comments.
If there are no, if there are no any more comments on the public hearing in reference to proposal number two, at this time, the public hearing is now closed, and we're going to go and reopen up our regular meeting and continue on with our council business. Next on the agenda, we have unfinished business. There are proposals number two, 2016.
Motion.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Chevlot.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Giles. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Wells.
If I may, the $15,000 requested by the council, I attended the Finance Committee meeting, and unless I missed something, I didn't hear what the definitive answer was for the reason for the $15,000. Do we have a, anyone have any idea what the reasoning for that is, or?
If you would.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Giles.
During the time as we were working with the administration, working on proposal appropriations to fit their needs, I asked to fulfill some of the concerns that Counselor Bobby Jones and Counselor Chevlot had concerning to if a time came when we might need to send some additional outside counsel to assist, or experts to assist the budget process. That was a concern that was voiced by them. I thought this would be a good time to add some money to the, to the, to the council budget that we can use if needed, but this is not any additional money. This was money that was requested by the administration to go to their personal services, and they were cordial and gracious enough to work with $15,000 to the council to assist us in the budget process.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Counselor Wells?
So, I need to understand that this is to supplement professional services. Is that incorrect?
I didn't hear anything about supplementing, but Counselor Giles, it is to supplement, correct?
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess it is to supplement and add to our council budget.
Okay.
To use those funds. There was concern from other counselors that we, you know, that we wouldn't have money to buy, you know, hire a budget folks. So, this gives us that latitude to do that if we, you know, complete the process.
So, it's my understanding that with the contract we currently have with Boz McKinney and Evans, is that once we go into the budget era timeframe, that they will supply us with whatever we need if we need it. Now, this give us an additional latitude to move forward if we need, but at the same time, we will have sufficient counsel moving forward in a budget year if there is any concerns. All right? Any more comments on proposal number two? Okay. All in favor? Proposal number two? Any opposed? Sixty-one. Motion carry. Proposal number two. Proposal number three, 2016.
Proposal number three, 2016, introduced by Counselors Chevlot and Giles, a proposal for an ordinance amending the 2016 budget as approved by the common council with respect to transfers within the general fund.
Is there a motion on the floor for proposal number three?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Wells.
I'll second.
Wheeler, as you were.
I'll second.
And second by Counselor Allen. Any discussion? Any questions or concerns about proposal number three? All in favor of proposal number three at this time by a show of hands? Any opposed? Unanimous? Motion carry, proposal number three. Moving right along to new business. Resolution number five, 2016.
Resolution number five, 2016, introduced by Counselors Giles and Wheeler, a resolution of the common council of Lawrence, Indiana resolving to publish notice of requests that public utilities and/or qualified providers propose conservation measures.
Is there a motion to, on the floor for resolution number five?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Giles, second.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Wheeler. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Chevlot.
At the request of myself, about one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down.
Okay.
Where it speaks of the committee shall be comprised of no more than three members selected, appointed by the mayor, and four members selected by the president of common council. I would ask that we would revise and amend this resolution to have at least a bipartisan, there would be at least one Republican member on this committee.
Why wouldn't there be?
Because it's not clear in this language. It just says, at your discretion, you would designate four members.
Oh, okay.
I'm just asking that, given that we do have Republican representative on the council, that at least one member would be Republican.
All right, is there a second on the motion? No second?
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Freeman?
Can I ask one final question, Mr. Chair? Are we voting on the motion to approve this? Or the motion, or is it a second motion to add Republican representation of the selection committee?
Well, it's my understanding that Counselor Chevlot, in reference to the wording, that there be some additional wording added to that section that represents that it clearly has at least one...
Essentially, yes.
Bipartisan.
What I'm asking is just to amend the resolution. So, my motion would be just to amend the resolution to add that language.
For section five, correct?
Well, it would be resolution number five, so as it is now.
Part number five, what part of, are you talking, are you talking overall?
Paragraph five?
Whereas clause.
Correct. Whereas clause, fifth paragraph.
Okay.
It's just a minor...
Counselor Giles, to answer your question, we, the Counselor Chevlot made the motion, and Counselor Freeman seconded that motion to amend. So, we're now discussing the amendment, not the main motion, not the main resolution, but just the amendment clause.
And that's to add bipartisan on the council president?
Yes.
One such member from the, from the president of common council, either of the...
Or the other party, however that's worded. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, well, we have to vote on that motion. So, it was motion by you, Ms. Counselor Chevlot, second by Counselor Freeman. Discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Giles.
Is that, is that, that this motion passed? I mean, the amendment is that there is one Republican appointed by the council, or one Republican from the entire committee?
That's a good question. Counselor Chevlot, can you address that question?
Well, the way that I read it is four members selected, appointed, or otherwise designated by the president of the common council. So, as I read it, it would be you that was designate four people. My request is that we amend the resolution that of those four people, that at least one would be a Republican.
Okay.
So, I want to use your help with this. So, can I amend this amendment?
You can. It can get a little bit complicated if we amend amendments and containments. Probably it's better than to do it, state your comments or concerns, take a motion on the amendment, and if it fails, offer it.
Well, I would like to...
You can. It's just, it can get complicated. We can get lost in terms of where we are in what we're talking about. You can't offer amendment on it, if you so desire.
So, at this time, where we are right now, there's a discussion on it.
Right.
It hasn't been voted. The amendment has, has yet to be voted on, so.
Well, my discussion is, to be quite honest, is that I would, I don't want these words too, but I would hypothesize that the mayor would have three Republicans. So, there would be Republican representation on the entire committee, which would be a committee bipartisan.
Let me, let me clarify something real quick. I think that we're going on an assumption because the majority is Democrat, okay? Let's be open and honest about this, that the assumption would be that it would be all the four selections by me would be Democrat. That's not a fair assumption, okay? And going forward, I respect Counselor Chevlot's request, and we're moving forward, but that's far from the case, okay? So, at this time, are there any more discussion in reference to amendment section, resolution number five, the fifth paragraph?
I, Mr. President.
Counselor Wheeler.
I would, I would like to note that, I'd like to note that perhaps maybe we should consider a different amendment in regards to saying both the mayor's appointments and the council appointments need to be bipartisan. That way, both parties are represented in both, so that can satisfy both arguments from both Giles and Chevlot. That's my discussion point. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, I wasn't going under the assumption of anything. I was just trying to bring clarity to making this bipartisan. That was the whole reason.
Yeah, well...
And, and the other reason why is the mayor only has three appointments. This council has four, so it has a majority. We can't presume who the mayor is going to pick or who we, who we won't pick. I have no idea.
Right, well...
I'm looking at it from a council perspective.
Exactly, and, and the point is, Counselor Chevlot, is that we have clarity in the public, so that we're clear on what we're saying and why we're saying what we're saying.
Understand.
All right. Any more discussion on, on the motion on the floor at this time? So, the motion on the floor has been for Counselor Chevlot, second by Counselor Freeman on the wording of the, of section of resolution number five, paragraph number five.
And I would, just for point of clarification, so you all know what you're voting on, I would propose that this language, to add this language at the end of that whereas clause, that what Counselor Chevlot's request was, the members selected by the president of the common council shall include at least one member from each Republican and Democrat parties.
And...
At least one shall be Republican, at least one should be Democrat.
And that'd be the same language for the mayor?
That would be a difference.
That's not what you're voting on right now.
Okay.
That is, that is Counselor Chevlot's, just for the council.
And then we'll, we'll address that.
If there's another amendment or if this amendment...
Got you, okay.
That's, that's the amendment. So, when you're voting, you know the language you're voting on. That's what I would propose.
Okay. So, there's no more discussion on this? By show of hands? All in favor? All opposed? Four-three? Four-three, motion carries. Motion fails on this wording.
Mr. President.
Counselor Wheeler.
I would like to make a motion to add an amendment to paragraph five on resolution number five, to correct the wording to state that there should be, both the mayor and the council president should nominate a bipartisan people within both their three and their four nominations.
Motion on the floor to, for the mayor and the council to have a bipartisanship for appointees to this, to this committee.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Any...
Counselor Wheeler, just so I understand what you're proposing for this request for a second, are you proposing that the, that the committee comprise the bipartisan members? Or are you suggesting both the mayor's appointments, his three members, one should be, at least one should be for each party, and of the president's appointments, at least one should be for each party?
Yes.
For a second?
Correct. Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Wheeler, is it second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Allen. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I presume that, given that my suggestion to amend the first ordinance to do it on a bipartisan basis failed, I would presume that this would also fail, because if we're not willing to do it on a bipartisan basis from a council, why would we expect the mayor to do so?
Well, this right here is, is equal.
No, sir, it's not.
Well, her wording is exactly that.
The math won't be equal.
Well, it's not about the numbers, it's about bipartisanship, and we're doing the right thing for the citizens of the city. And let's keep in mind, if that's the case, which has been brought up in several of our meetings, then that's what we are going exactly with. We are here to do the work of the citizens.
We had that opportunity to do that in the previous vote for the amendment of the resolution.
Well, this right here, Counselor Chevlot, gives us and the mayor both the opportunity to present a bipartisanship.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Giles.
I actually somewhat agree with Counselor Chevlot, as well as Counselor Wheeler. If the mayor holds the party lines, and he, and he, and he appoints Republicans, and if we, if the council, you know, if the council was to say for, say for argument, the council, you know, appointed a majority of Democrats, the entire selection committee would be bipartisan. Now, does the council have more votes than, yes, well, that's the way that the thing is written, but in the sense of the spirit of bipartisanship, the whole selection committee would be bipartisan, potentially four or three. Or it could be, it could be, it could be, I mean, you know, I don't know if it's a bipartisan, but it would be bipartisan, but if you leave it the way that it is.
Okay, the motion's on the floor by Counselor Wheeler, second by Counselor Allen, that it be worded such as that it be bipartisan on both behalf of the council and the mayor's office. Is there any more discussion on this? By show of hands, all in favor? All right, three. All opposed? Motion fail, amendment fails. All right. All right, back to discussion on the main motion for resolution number five. There was detailed discussion on that, so I think we're at the... Is any more questions on that at this time? Is any more questions on that at this time? Resolution number five, by a show of hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number five. Resolution number six.
Resolution number six, 2016, introduced by Counselor Giles. A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence approving an increase of the rate tracking factor for the sewage department.
Is there a motion on the floor for resolution number six? Is there a motion on the floor for resolution number six?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve by Counselor Giles, second.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Weaver. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Counselor Freeman.
I would like to know how much the rate tracking factor would be. Is it going to be, I know it's like so many per gallon or units, or is it five dollars or six dollars more on the month, or?
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry. President Williams, Councilmember, I'm Scott Solomon.
Okay, there we go.
The, the impact on the, the bill is ten cents per thousand gallons that we make an adjustment for 2016, which is calculated out based on projected total volumes to notice CPD for treatment or for sound. Bill, we calculated we need to adjust the factor by six cents per thousand gallons. Add it to the existing four cents per thousand gallons, makes it up to ten cents per thousand gallons. So if you're an average residential customer with five thousand gallons, you divide your five thousand by ten, or by thousand, you have over five, so you're, you're looking at fifty cents on the average residential bill, on the sewer.
So, so you're saying it's either five or six dollars more on the month?
No, fifty cents.
Fifty cents, okay. So on, on the bill, are we going to decipher?
Yes, there's a line I would like to tell you what the tracking factor is.
Okay. That's what I want to, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions or comments on resolution number six?
I have another question.
Counselor Giles?
Could you please tell us what exactly is the, the sewer tracking factor?
The sewer tracking factor was established by ordinance in 2009. It was a way for utility to pass on the annual CPI-based increases that we get from CPD every year. And so the ordinance says, you know, the USP will recommend, you know, on the seat of the certification of increased CPD, you know, the appropriate tracking factor adjustment to allow this cost to pass through, so that we do not fall behind as we had for the last year, because it was not done. And so, you know, right now, we're, we're in an upside-down situation revenue-wise. Our, our costs are going up, but our revenue, the tracking factor did not get adjusted for the last seven years, so we're missing out on revenue, and likewise, you're going to show this cost.
If you prefer, if you tell us what the cost of CPD is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Citizens Energy Group, there's where we send our sewer workers, or City of Lawrence.
All right, any more courses, comments?
Yeah, I got a question.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, President. So, so what's caused us to get upside down? I hear what you're saying, I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, in 2012 was the last time that the rate tracking factor was adjusted, but since then, in 2013, 14, 15, and 10 and 16, we've received increases from CPD each year, but because those were not put in front of the utility service board under the previous administration, it didn't happen, and so the consequence of loss of CPD.
Okay, so, I'm just trying to get some clarification. So, so for the past four years, it's been recorded back to Lawrence that we are treating more sewage than we have in the past.
Not actually more sewage, our, our costs per thousand gallons are going up, but we're not, we're not adjusting our tracking factor to pass those increases through, as would the attempted or since we've been.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what causes that cost to go up.
They, they just adjust.
Just arbitrary.
They, based on the consumer pricing that, that they, they just make an adjustment, they send us a location, and so this sewer tracking factor reported since 2009 was designed for us, it just passed after.
So it has nothing to do with our volume being increased?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or concerns? Well, we have a superintendent up here. Thank you, Mrs. Salisbury. If not, a show of hands, all in favor of resolution number six? Unanimous? Opposed? Unanimous? Resolution number six carries.
Mr. President, I don't know if you have the control switch, but I've got a couple of texts that says there's no volume for the people at home. I don't know if you've scrolled up there.
Volume?
Yes, the people are watching it on television.
Okay, I wonder, is, is it because we're not talking to the mic? We probably have to get closer to the mic. Can anyone, everyone hear in the audience well? Then if they can hear in the audience, it should carry if we're talking to the mic. So we need to be cognizant of that, I think. All right, next on, next on the agenda, we have comments of the administration.
Please turn my mic on.
I think they moved that podium around so much that things got in the way.
That's better.
Great. I have a few very green comments to make here. Counselor Freeman, I do want to comment very quickly about the flashing lights. That's, those are, as I know, what I can find out, not a whole lot, but those are, I think, N-DOT provided flashing lights in front of the school zones. They are flashing lights or flashing school signs that we could acquire. I'm not really sure what the timeline is for us to be able to do that. Probably work with Lawrence Township Schools. There are several schools that are outside the city of Lawrence, so we'll try to make sure to be consistent in terms of being flashing in front of schools and even sign them, saying. But I'll try to get management for you as good as I can. If it's okay, I can email you that or email Councilor President Williams and report it through my actual counsel if that works. A couple of things I wanted to bring up, and Counselor Wells, I can't answer your question very quickly. Thursday, really sort of about to say here real quick, I might not be able to be on Thursday. This Thursday, the officials from the Rose Parade coming into town, we're actually going to bring them in from the airport to Lawrence Central as part of the celebration. The Lawrence Township Band is going to be marching in this year's Rose Parade. So those officials are coming to town Thursday. Thursday, I think we have a, a program over at Lawrence Central beginning at four o'clock, so I will not be able to be, unless it's going to be before four o'clock on, on Thursday. But if you'll give me a call or give, Mr. Coler, a call, which I can still see instead. Which goes to the second part of what I was about to announce here, is that we invite all the councilors, if they would like, to certainly attend the, have the gala celebration occasion, probably from the Rose Parade officials, the president and his wife will be here on Thursday. Congressman Susan Brooks will be here to present the Rose Parade, like, on Thursday over at Lawrence Central. They will then be having another gathering here on Thursday, or Friday afternoon, at the Stare Center. This is all being organized by Lawrence Township officials and Superintendent Smith. And then on Saturday, we're actually having the band members from Lawrence Township over here at the Stare, at the Government Building, and they're going to be doing community service for about three hours that morning at Lawrence, as part of their community service out there. So that's coming up. Want to also give a little bit of shout-out to Eric Martin, or Parks Superintendent, he put on a couple of things this past weekend, I guess it was the Easter weekend, we did that one, frankly, egg hunt, in which I believe there were 10,000 eggs that were hidden, and they were collected in just under 15 minutes. I also want to give a, a special round of thank you to the group of seniors in City of Lawrence that actually stuffed every one of those eggs. They also provided cupcakes for all the kids who came. We had about 200 kids show up on that day, so it was quite an event on that day. Eric also helped with the sunrise service that was very special on the following Sunday. Ended up being a little bit chilly, very great celebration, sunrise service on that, so that's all. Thank you.
One thing, Mr. Mayor, times. Never got the times on Thursday?
The time is a little bit flexible, President Williams. I'm kind of going to follow what Lawrence Township gave me.
Okay.
Their plane arrives at 4:41 on Thursday. They're going to try and be back at Lawrence Central by 5:30 on, I'm sorry, I said, I'm Thursday, but it is Thursday, I'm sorry, 4:41 on Thursday. They're going to try and be back at Lawrence Central by 5:30. At that point, there'll be an intervention, dignitaries, Congressman Brooks, Senator Brooks will then present the Rose Parade. A plan to be presented to Lawrence Township Schools by the Rose Parade, the president and his wife, and it will be received by Doctor Smith over at Lawrence Central, I believe, there's some kind of dinner perhaps after working the gala. They will, they will actually go from there over to Lawrence Door to a, at the end of the practice, part of the group is going after the Rose Parade. And then on Friday, they have activities, they will, they will actually be interviewed on two local stations, actually, Rose Parade, they will be interviewed on two local stations early in the morning on Friday, and they will come back. They have quite a few activities planned for them on Friday afternoon, then, hopefully the actual dinner, the gala event at the Stare Center on Friday evening. And then on Saturday, when the band students arrive here for their work session, I will then be taking the president and his wife on a tour of the State Park and the Gulf Coast, kind of the four areas in the area as a part of that. So I'm just trying to show off all of the activities that they have to do.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have citizens' comments. Anyone signed up? No comments from the citizens? Next on the agenda, we have adjournment. Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn?
I'll make it.
First by Counselor Wheeler, second by Counselor Wells. By a show of hands, all in favor to adjourn?